Good evening, I'd like to call the March fifteenth Common Council Meeting to order. It is six oh two, we will begin and begin with Councilwoman Cutler, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we begin, I'd like to remind everybody, both council and audience, if you are going to speak, please speak clearly into the microphone. Roll call by Clerk Treasure Parthum.
Councilwoman Cutler.
Present.
Councilman Frankie.
Present.
Councilman Vincent.
Present.
Councilwoman Kenezny.
Present.
Councilwoman Ficus.
Present.
Councilwoman West.
Here.
Councilman Galloway.
Here.
All present.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Petitions and comments of citizens, I would also like to remind everybody, it is three minutes maximum speaking time and this is not a question and answer unless the council chooses it to be a question and answer, so please keep that in mind if you are coming here to ask questions for answers. With that, and Mr. Otis will be monitoring the, the social media site for any public comments. Martin Chudalik, Martin if you would come to the mic and state your name and address.
Hi, Martin Chudalik, four zero nine F Street, La Porte, Indiana. I have concerns about the second and final reading of the twenty-four hour parking in the municipal code thing being dealt with tonight, it seems like it's two weeks, it's kind of quick to address something like this. My other concern is, is that the surf people are putting fiber throughout the city. I'm seeing damage to the sidewalks and some of the streets with the equipment that they're using. And I would, I'm petitioning the city to have the ordinance people or somebody not drive but walk behind them because I see damages, new damage to sidewalks. And I know that sidewalks weren't in the best condition to begin with, in some cases, but they're, they're breaking up sidewalk pads and, and damaging the streets specifically at third and F is where I saw some what appears to be street damage. But, but I'm sure that I'm, I know I'm not walking the whole path and so I'm concerned about the damage that they're doing and, and how they're going to seed where they're planting their, um, things in the ground and stuff like that. Yes, so hopefully they're not going to leave the city looking like a mess and they've only just begun, I'm presuming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great point, we will.
Follow up with Surf Air and I know Councilwoman Kenezny had a resident, resident concern and had that answered as well, that they're taking care of any damage done to the property, so we'll follow up as well. Any other petitions or comments from the public? Online?
No, just many people viewing.
Standing committee reports, we'll begin with Councilman Frankie.
The school board met last Wednesday, Ashton Jackson was honored by the board for his state championship in wrestling and they're going to continue the homeschool academy next year. There are currently seventy-three students enrolled in it and they've hired an outside teaching company at Mentum to teach the kids, I guess they're currently using them and they will be next year as well. They're also continuing the distance learning academy. This has more students in it than the homeschool academy, but they didn't list an exact number. And the difference here is the distance learning academy requires that students log in at a specific time like school and have a structured schedule versus the homeschool academy, they can do it whenever they want, I know which one I would want. And that was kind of the main topics of what they discussed in the next school board meeting will be the second Wednesday of next month at the old Boston Middle School. And redevelopment commission meets the last Wednesday of this month, five fifteen here at City Hall, that's all I've got.
Councilwoman Ficus.
Park Board will meet this Wednesday in person, four P M. at the park office and then traffic commission will meet Tuesday, April sixth, six P M. at the police station.
Councilman Vincent.
Nothing to add this evening.
Councilman Galloway.
Police merit commission met March ninth, the F O P and the merit commission working on a, a change in the way they do promotions, soon they get it worked out, it'll be more of an interview, I believe. And another dog is in the works and our SWAT team is working with Michigan City and the county. And cars are ordered, they're talking about a neighborhood watch and the generator should be in sometime March, April, I hope.
Which makes your day.
Yeah, you bet.
Councilwoman Cutler.
Nothing to report.
Councilwoman West.
The fire merit commission talked more about the promotional testings from last month that will take place in May. It was also announced that the semi-annual performance ratings for each firefighter will be distributed in March to be completed in April. And also the plan commission met on March ninth and the Whispering Meadows Phase Seven project passed five to one.
Councilwoman Kenezny.
The airport authority met last Wednesday, March tenth, they're still working diligently on their master plan along with the runway reorientation. They did have an accident response plan exercise that was executed in February and that involved many different types of first responders. And finally, fuel sales are looking strong after a very weak February due to the weather. The historic preservation committee meets tomorrow at City Hall and then the tree commission will meet this Thursday at City Hall in person as well.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kenezny, second and final reading.
Your honor, I'd like to make a motion for a second and final reading of an ordinance amending an ordinance.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kenezny.
Second and final reading of an ordinance amending ordinance forty dash ninety-seven, an ordinance amending chapter fifty-four of the municipal code of the city of La Porte to change composition of the historic preservation commission.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion.
Again, this is just the, at the mayor's request, adding that the La Porte County historian does not have to reside within the city limits, but still has to reside within the county.
So this makes a lot of sense to have our historic leader involved in our commission here in the city and by the way, Fern Eddy, who we all know had passed and was unbelievably unbelievable in her position and our thoughts and prayers go out to the family. So with this, this would allow Bruce Johnson to be a part of the historic preservation commission, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Councilman Vincent.
Honorable mayor, I'd like to make a motion for a second and final reading of an ordinance by title only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Councilman Vincent.
It's an ordinance amending section nine four dash two two seven, parking in excess of twenty-four hours of the municipal code of the city of La Porte, Indiana.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. If we could, I guess, Mr. Otis, if you want to just follow through, this basically just states that allows code enforcement who is out and about, correct?
Correct, so code enforcement has the authority now to issue these citations, which previously they did not. Talking with Chief Breton, this helps out considerably because it's pretty, pretty time consuming for a rather minimal infraction on, to pull the police away, so this, this gives Mr. Batchelor's department additional authority to issue these citations.
Further discussion?
Mayor, if I might add.
Councilman Vincent.
Thank you, so this is an ordinance that's been in a force here for the city for quite some time with our street department superintendent having that authority as well as our police department officials to have that authority. So the real change here is just that we're adding Jeff Batchelor's group into that mix to be able to enforce that same ordinance. That, that is absolutely correct and I don't believe currently that, that the street department, it, it, at least as I'm aware of, is not issuing infractions for this, so.
Sure.
They don't have time, I mean, they're booked, so Jeff Batchelor, his team from code enforcement are out and about every day right there, so it makes common sense to allow them to be added to this, so.
And this is, by the way, just, this is an infraction under our ordinance, this is not in citation for a violation of any state law, for example, only a violation of our local ordinances, Jeff would, code enforcement would not have the authority to issue, you know, a speeding violation, for example.
Parking in excess of twenty-four hours.
Is a local ordinance, correct.
Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this ordinance? Hearing none, any other further council discussion? We do have a motion and a second, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. We do have a, two ordinances that will be discussed this evening and because of the length, we will be shortening those ordinances and then having basically, basically a synopsis of what we're discussing, so with that, Councilwoman Cutler.
Your honor, I move to introduce an ordinance read for the first time by title only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman Cutler.
An ordinance of the common council of the city of La Porte, Indiana, annexing to and bringing within the city limits of La Porte, Indiana and amending the zoning ordinance for property located in Pleasant Township contiguous herewith, end of title.
So I believe Bert Cook is here to speak on this, I'm going to ask Bert Cook to, if you could explain in a little more detail what this ordinance would do.
Thank you, mayor, Bert Cook, Executive Director of the La Porte Economic Advancement Partnership. Good evening to the council. So tonight, we're, we're very pleased to be able to present to you and support a petition from Rota Farms to be annexed into the city of La Porte. There's, there's about two hundred and fifteen acres approximately that would ultimately be brought into the city limits. I'd first like to say, I know Bill Nelson is here, have, have had the pleasure of working with Bill before, he's a terrific attorney and, and we appreciate his support and his work on this. Also Sherry Bannock, I believe, is the real estate agent on this, on this property and she's been a great help providing information as well, as well as Nick Otis, our city attorney who is, who does a terrific job with this, with this, these annexation requests. So the mayor and this entire team, the, the city council has, has made it a priority to grow our community, we've talked about the need to bring new properties into the city for a variety of reasons. In this instance, we have an owner who, who also shares that desire, he would like to be part of our community and, and annexing this property represents some significant advantages to him and his family and so we would like to proceed with that. There is a process that I'm sure Bill and, and Nick Otis will tell, will tell us a little bit more about the process that we'll go through over the next couple of months, but, but we're very excited to, to support this annexation and look forward to, to, to being able to bring this property into the city limits. Mayor, I would, as I wrap up my comments here quickly, I'd, I'd just like to share a big thank you to you, appreciate the fact that, that you've spearheaded this, this, this process, you've been extremely proactive in, in searching out and working with property owners who want to become part of the city, it's a great service to our community and, and really thank you for that work.
Thank you, Mr. Cook for reading it just like I wrote it, I do appreciate that.
As we continue to move, Mr. Nelson, would you like to add anything?
Mayor. Good evening, members of the council, good to see you, Mr. Cook, thank you for the nice comments. It's been a pleasure to, to work on this project over the last couple of months. My client is Rota Farms LLC and that's the legal petitioner here, however, there's always, there's always faces and humans behind these entities. And the, the sole member that owns a hundred percent interest in the LLC is a gentleman who many, many of you are probably familiar with, Harold Barr. Harold is there in, present, present in person tonight even though I'm hiding behind my screen still, so if you look up and Harold wave at you, you can put a face to this Rota Farms LLC because he's there tonight. This is a great opportunity, it's a mutually great opportunity both for Mr. Barr and his family, but also the city. This property for anyone who maybe just wondering where it's at, it, it's a property, if you're familiar with Boyd Boulevard, which we all are, and the water treatment plant out there and the Assemblies of God Church, there is a large, large field that every year bears agricultural crops just south of that, but that is the property, that's where this is located. It literally sits right contiguous to the current city limits line in that part of, of the, of the city. And so it's just a hop, skip and a jump there to, to become part of the city here. Mr. Barr has had this property in a farming operation and as his family has for years and they feel at this point, this property could be best utilized to its highest and best use, to be brought into the city limits. It's ideally located for development, it's ideally located for the opportunity for the city to attract new businesses, which in turn creates new jobs and all of us are for that. At the same time, again, it's a mutually symbiotic relationship, the Barr family would stand a benefit as well, that they already have plans to aggressively market this property if the city council is so inclined to approve this process and this petition for annexation. The property right now at two hundred and fifteen acres is already zoned partially M1 and partially agricultural. I'm not sure if there's any displays there with any screens on there, but there's a, a couple of visual images that I've made available. The first one kind of shows a, a general overview of the property, shows the acreage, gives a parcel ID number and that gives you an idea of where the property is located, how it's currently situated, what its current boundaries and parameters are, as well as where it sits there in immediate proximity just south of Boyd Boulevard. If you look at the next screen that hopefully someone can, can flip to, that shows the current makeup of the zoning and you'll see there that the front portion of it is currently M1, the back portion of is ag. This petition, if granted by the city council, as it goes through the process, would not only annex the property in, but would make the entire two hundred and fifteen acre parcel M1 light industrial. So, and again, part of it already is and you can see there kind of the dividing lines of, of those current zoning categories. So that's the, the petition in a nutshell, I have worked with, with Mr. Otis, we've developed a timeline because as you know, this is a process that includes not only a couple of readings, but it includes a, a public hearing. That would be slated to occur on April fifth, I would plan to be there in, present in person by then, as I believe by then I'll have my second shot, so I'll be happy to, to start showing up again in public. But we are in the process now, we've already gotten some of these certified green cards back fulfilling our duty to notify all those entitled to legal notice, so we're well underway. Now, this process is, has been well planned out, we've got a step-by-step plan to go through that's already been laid out well by, by Mr. Otis and I believe the publication was probably submitted to the, to the newspaper today for the public hearing that would occur on April fifth. So we're excited about the project, everything I've heard about it as I've joined in on the project in the last few months, sounds like the city is excited as well, certainly a great opportunity for, for everyone involved, we're happy to be here.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson, and we are.
I am as excited as well, two hundred and fifteen acres, when we talk about thirty by thirty, having thirty thousand people here in the city of La Porte by twenty thirty, this is a great first step forward, we've, we've discussed annexation since day one and I've enjoyed my conversation with Mr. Barr, so if Mr. Barr, Ms. Bannock, if you guys would like to come to the microphone and say a few words, we'd love to have you.
Well, I basically came tonight to just introduce myself, so put a name to the, a face to the name, so, but I'm very excited to work with the city on this and I think it's going to be a very good thing for everybody, so.
Thank you. Would anybody else from this community like this?
Council discussion.
If I could just add.
Mr. Otis?
Briefly, mayor, so that, just to give some procedural, the, kind of the process going forward, this has already been submitted to the plan commission who will review this to determine that it, that it conforms to the master plan of the city. This is not a rezone, it's an original zoning, so the zoning, just as Mr. Nelson pointed out, will come with this annexation. It's a mix of, of agricultural and M1 right now, which M1 is light industrial, that's what it'll be zoned to when it comes into the city. Most of the property around that area is already M1, that's even within the city limits. Additionally, utilities run immediately adjacent to the property, which make it very easy to bring utilities into the parcel. So the plan commission meets on April thirteenth and they'll, they'll review it to consider that it complies with the master plan. Additionally, when the, at the same time that we have the public hearing, we will also ask for approval of a resolution adopting the fiscal plan for this project, for those of you that were previously on the council, the fiscal plan identifies the costs associated with annexing this property from utility costs, stormwater, water, providing fire service, providing police service and all those additional costs that any property may bring on, so that'll be for your consideration as well.
Thank you. Council discussion? Hearing none, we will move this then to the first meeting in April. Councilwoman West.
Your honor, I move to introduce an ordinance read for the first time in its entirety.
Second.
Just by title only.
So could you like to amend that motion? By title, by title only has been amended, do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman West.
An ordinance to amend Article nineteen of the zoning ordinance number thirteen dash two zero one seven of the city of La Porte, Indiana, as enacted August seventeenth, two thousand seventeen, and which is a part of the chapter eighty-two of the municipal code of the city of La Porte, Indiana.
So based on the length of this ordinance, we've asked our city planner, Tom Casey, to come up and discuss what this is regarding.
Thank you, mayor, council. The purpose of this amendment is to achieve two goals, one, we want to reach our goal of thirty thousand people by twenty thirty. Secondly, we want to continue to embrace the branding program that we started, which is embracing our national resources. And with that, we are amending our signed ordinance to enhance the overall physical appearance of, of the city of La Porte.
If you could move the mic, thank you.
Is that better? Okay. Okay, do I need to start over or, okay, you guys can hear me, all right. So the whole goal is to enhance the physical appearance of the city, right now we have a lot of signs that are non-conforming, we have a lot of temporary signs everywhere you go on most of our major streets. Our competing cities all have amended their signed ordinance in various ways, so most of these sign, these amendments are in line with what, what our competition is doing. So with that, I can just quickly summarize what you're going to see if you, okay, thanks. If you, if you go through line item by line item, but basically first off, we're eliminating billboards, any new billboards in the city of La Porte will not be allowed, existing billboards will be allowed. Secondly, we are going to limit the amount of temporary signage in town, the size of the signs and how long those signs can be up. We're also going to limit the height of new signs, any new signs cannot be higher than nine feet, existing signs will remain at the height that they are, but any new signs will, will be nine feet. Another thing, obsolete signs, signs of businesses that have gone out of business within sixty days, those signs must come down and they will revert to the new sign ordinance, so if we have a thirty-five foot pole sign on an automotive facility that's been out of business for a year, that sign needs to come down, the new business will have to conform with the new signage amendments, so. They likely would, would, you know, they'd have to make a request to do that and again, all of these are subject to, people can get variances if they need it, so if there's a hardship case or if, if it's an automotive company that went out of business and an automotive company coming in, maybe we would look at that situation, so it's not an end-all be-all, they do have the variance option on, on any of the signage, so. Same with the billboard, that's correct, which is why we left the square footage of the billboard in the amendment. And that's, that's basically the, the main points of the amendment tonight on the sign ordinance.
So this is a major piece of legislation, so this is something that has a lot of questions and please take the time.
To understand exactly what we're talking about here, but the goal of it is, besides competing with the other communities, what else does it do, what is our goal, if you could get into that, about for someone driving on Lincoln Way or driving in our community?
Yeah, so, well, number one, we've got probably more billboards per capita than any city that I'm, that I'm aware of in, in our region and that is a negative, especially when you're looking over Pine Lay. when you're looking over Pine Lake and the sun setting behind the billboard. That's not a, that's not an appealing thing for anybody, even a, whether it's a 10-year-old kid or a visitor from out of town. So, we want to, we want to definitely stop growth in that area. Secondly, temporary signs are, are a little bit out of control. We've got banner signs. We've got balloons. We've got businesses that open up and put up, just put up a banner on the building. That's got to be not eliminated. You're allowed to do that, but there's a certain time period that you're allowed to do it, and a certain number of times per year that you're allowed to do it. So, it, it controls that. The, the height of the signs is, is extremely important. If you look at, you know, the Starbucks or the Dunkin' Donuts or business, new businesses that will be going into Newport Landing, all those are monument signs. Monument signs are what most cities are, are only allowing now. We will still allow versions, but they're going to have to be nine feet or under. So, what this will do is it'll make the city of LaPorte look much more attractive, much more contemporary. It'll look like we're make, even though we have these existing signs that are non-conforming, we're making an attempt to clean it up and control it going forward.
East of Tipton, on the north side, there's a business that's been vacated for some time, and there's a long, high-standing sign there. Rich, I think it is-
Rich Automotive.
Rich Automotive, that's never been addressed, and it stands there, even though the business has been gone for some time.
Yes. And Thunderbird, Thunderbird, not Thunderbird, the bowling alley.
Underbird.
Is it Thunderbird Lanes? Yeah. So, that's one. There's quite a few.
Further questions?
Yeah. Mr. Casey, did you mention the timeline on those obsolete businesses? If there's a timeline when those signs need to be taken down?
Yeah, we made it quick. It's 60 days.
60 days.
So, if the business goes on-
Address profanity on political signs-
That people have on their homes. I've still received many calls of people wishing, we have one across from the high school, to have, you know, removed. But again, we walk, Mr. Otis will confirm a difficult path with someone's rights.
First Amendment.
First Amendment right, and we prefer not to have that profanity, especially across from a high school. But this does not, this still would protect that while we may not like it or support it.
Correct.
I have a question. Are there any changes for sidewalk signs within the downtown in terms of the height or location?
We didn't change those at all. The only thing we did downtown is we are regulating the murals. So, any murals in town will be required to have an application. You can't just put up a mural on any building. That application will be reviewed by the planning department and also reviewed by the visual arts council, so that we all are in agreement of what's going up on the walls and what will be seen by the public.
Mr. Casey, I remember discussing that with you, and, and obviously, we've got some really attractive murals that people have done, you know, on their businesses. But there's concern when they don't use the right paint, for example, or, right?
Yeah, there's like in the application- I've, I've actually attached a copy of the application. And this, that application's based on Indiana landmarks provisions that they've already provided. So, covers things like insurance, who's insured, who's going to paint it, what's the five-year outlook look, look like for maintenance, if, if there's an issue there, having permission of the building owner. If you're on a separate owner's roof, do you have permission to do that? If you have set up scaffolding, you know, just every, everything that can be covered under a mural that needs to be covered is in there.
So, I'm going to bring up one point on Lincoln Way as well. There's the LaPorte Pantry, which I assume is being leased, and there's probably someone that owns the entire building. But the second sign, which was whatever was there, there's nothing there now. The sign's been removed, but it's somewhat of an unattractive leftover blank with the lights directly facing Lincoln Way.
Yeah.
Is that, what would have to be taken down there? Would, because it's unattractive as we speak now, but the signs, the front of the sign's been removed because nobody's in there.
Yeah. So, in that case, the sign has to be covered with a blank, if that's, if that's the case. So, you cannot have an exposed sign with lighting or electrical exposed.
Further questions?
Yeah. Is there like a fine schedule or, you know, set up for that when they're not complying with it?
We, that would be entirely up to the code department on the fines. So-
We did not address that. We just addressed the regulations of the signs themselves and the temporary signage, and what's, what's, what's not allowed and what is allowed.
I'd also like to say, Mr. Casey, how long have you been working on this?
Because this has been going for some time.
Six, yeah, six months.
At least six months.
Yeah.
So, great work on this.
Further discussion? Would the public like to comment on the sign ordinance as it states today? Is there any public comment?
No.
Hearing none. We will move this to the first foray vote for the first meeting in April.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Mr. Otis, public hearing?
Thank you. This, opened this for a public hearing to vacate a portion of a public right-of-way, the portion of K Street between 23rd Avenue and 24th Avenue here in the city of LaPorte. Ms. Parthun has handed me affidavit of proof of publication, which was timely filed for this meeting today. So, just as a bit of background before I open it up to any public comment, resident adjacent to this right-of-way Sylvia Espinoza has requested that the right-of-way be vacated. This was previously discussed at a meeting, I think went through traffic commission as well. If, if you go look even from Google Earth, for example, you can see that this was never developed. It's not a street, there, there's not a street there or anything. It's just, it's just grass essentially and trees. So, we've talked with the various department heads previously. There's no utilities running under there, and so she is requesting, there's no action to be taken tonight, but requesting that, that this portion of K Street between 23rd and 24th be vacated. So, I'd open this up to any public comment, if there are any. Any public comment? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing, and then we'll have an ordinance at a later date for review.
Thank you, Mr. Otis. Councilman Frankie.
Your honor, I move to introduce a resolution by the common council of the city of LaPorte approving the Heart of LaPorte Plan.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilman Frankie.
Resolution by the common council of the city of LaPorte approving the Heart of LaPorte Plan. Whereas, the Heart of LaPorte Plan was funded by the Healthcare Foundation of LaPorte and the City of LaPorte Redevelopment Commission with input from various members of the community. Whereas, the city of LaPorte has embarked on an ambitious plan of creating a healthy living vision for the Heart of LaPorte. The main purpose for the Heart of LaPorte Plan is to create destinations to drive active living in Newport Landing, Clear Lake, and downtown, and build infrastructure to support it. This process will create a long-term vision for the area while focusing on short-term redevelopment, place-making, and recreate, recreation opportunities. Whereas, the common council of the city, oh, no, don't want to read that part to the end.
Thank you. Because this is a resolution, it can be voted on this evening. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion. Council members, thoughts? I mean, the Heart of LaPorte Plan is something that is a vision that we're moving forward to, forward with, that-
Is, is the plan accessible on the website yet?
We are waiting to have council approval before we put on the website. And Mr. Casey here, if you'd like to step to the microphone and add anything else regarding the Heart of LaPorte Plan, and that some things are already in, on the move, correct?
Yes, Mayor. We are currently working on the first phase of the project, which would be the Clear Lake Loop, which is completing the 1.7-mile loop around Clear Lake, tying that in with the Chessey Trail, which is three and a half miles. We're also looking at what's called the City to Shore Bicycle Route, which would be temporarily taking us over Detroit from Clear Lake and going down Lake Street over to the Stone Lake Trail. So, providing connectivity to all areas of the city. Again, that's what's happening right now as we speak, so.
And without the reappraisal of the Healthcare Foundation of LaPorte, that own this plan will not-
Have happened. The future development will not happen without their wonderful partnership. And I don't know how many times we can say it, how many is never going to be enough, because we're just so fortunate to have them in our community.
Yes, and they've been great to work with on, on every aspect of it. I also have to thank Nick and Beth, who did initial work on this with Maria and with the foundation. Nick Minnick and Beth Schrader, sorry. So-
Council discussion?
I like the thought and effort that has been put into this, just because the public has had so much input as well. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Let the work begin. And we will put that on, the plan is to put that on the website, so. Other business? As council members have been informed, as I, the American Rescue Plan from the federal government, the city of LaPorte is expected to receive $11.69 million. Details to come, but at least from my perspective, it has to be something that will impact our community and our residents for some time. This is one-time money. You can't put it towards, you know, you don't want to put it towards raises or other things, but to focus on impacting the city of LaPorte from my perspective. So, it's a lot of money, but, you know, for infrastructure, it could go very fast. So, we have to be cautious, careful, and make sure we have, that we all agree on a plan. Thoughts on that?
Yeah, as soon as you get what all we can use it for, because I'm sure there's got to be, you know, rules or whatever.
We anticipate that, Courtney and I spoke on Friday, I believe, Thursday or Friday, that the guidelines are going to be a little broader than the, the past COVID funds, the restrictions there. But from what we gather, and I don't know all, that all of the rules are out yet, that it'll be broader in what you can spend that money on.
It'll be very limited, you know. It will have most of the control from everyone I've spoke to of how we want to spend those dollars. So, it's a real opportunity. It's a, it's a great opportunity for our community, and also if we can partner with other groups, other nonprofits that have funding available to double the funds if possible. We had a meeting last week with Goodwill. They received $10 million from Jeff Bezos' ex-wife. They're looking across northern Indiana of potentially where we, they can spend money. And so, if they see a plan that they like, some portion of that could potentially come here in the city of LaPorte. So, there's a lot of opportunity. We just have to be smart and, in my mind, make an impact in the community. So, further discussion on that?
No, I'm just saying, I, I think $11 million sounds like a lot, but it will go quickly. So, I like the idea of trying to partner with other monies.
And housing or lack of housing of some sort is a real concern, is an issue here in our community. And so, there might be some opportunities there as well. With that, just to update you, the fire department did meet with all the council members to discuss the potential discussion of ambulance service. So, especially for Mr. Galloway or Councilman Galloway, I wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. And the fire department is looking at grants for the cost, the upfront cost of any ambulance service, and then also the payroll and benefits of, of those individuals for three years that would run the ambulance program. But as we grow 30 by 30, we don't want to wait till we're there to then address the situation, whereas the county, who's a great partner, has only seven ambulances countywide, and think that we're the second-largest county in the state, that could be an issue. So, we're further moving forward. I thought, I saw Chief Snyder here, but thank him for his efforts and, and work to do. Is there any other business?
Mayor, there's one comment from firefighter Bill Lot, who suggested mountain bike trails with, with the American Fund.
Appreciate that.
I think I saw it's Bill's birthday today.
Yes. Happy birthday to Mr. Lot.
New shooting range.
Further comments?
How about a new shooting range, huh?
I have a lot of bad ideas, but still working on good ones.
Any other discussion?
Yes, VFW. Okay, if you want to get in our chili cook-off, you have to sign up by Sunday. Chili cook-off's the 28th. I thought you were going to get the fire department and everybody. What happened?
VFW, August 20, or March 28th.
Yeah.
Chili cook-off.
Do you and I need to discuss this privately?
And Roger, Mr. or Councilman Galloway will not be providing an option for chili, so you're all safe to come. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much, and thanks to the public. It's great to see everybody.